Councilmember Jimmy Clanton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble. Councilmember George Turner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
Mayor Jason Larry.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. You all stand please for invocation. Folks, we're gonna do something a little special just even if you don't mind. Councilmember Rob Clanton will deliver our invocation. However, we all want you to know that both of us had a loss in our friends and fraternal family. As I developed my public-private partnership with the city of Lithonia some years ago, we developed a pretty popular concert series and we built an amphitheater and it was just fabulous. And we ran as long as we could go. But the, one of our co-founders of that, his name was Mr. Curtis Lee. He did great work with us, great work. And he made an unfortunate demise being murdered in Johns Creek this past week. So I want to give a moment of silence for Mr. Lee and then councilman, if you want to share.
In reference to my brother Ken Alexander, he was also lost. He had terminal cancer and no one knew about it, but it was just something sudden. So he was my fraternal brother for over forty years. So as we honor him tonight, I also have a word of silence in his, in his name. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your merciful, kind, and loving, compassionate, great God. And we honor you tonight. Lord, we thank you that as we come before your presence today, Lord, we ask first of all that you comfort the families of those that are lost. We thank you that you are the great confederate and we know that your Holy Spirit will give them the strength to walk through this valley as they move forth to the promised land that they're going. So Father, we honor you tonight. We thank you, Lord, first of all, for this meeting. As we submit and commit this meeting to you that we would do that which is right, just, and pleasing in your sight. We invite your Holy Spirit to come in and give us wisdom, direction, and understanding. For as we please you, then the people will be blessed. So Father, our desire is never to do anything that is not like you. We are your examples, we are your disciples, we are your, we are your name in this earth as a city and as a people and as a council. So Father, we commit and submit to you today that you will be blessed in all that we do. And when we leave this evening, you will say, "Well done" in the work that we've accomplished. And we give you the glory and praise for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, we'll go to the approval of the council agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Make a motion that we approve the council agenda for city council meeting, March 9, 2020.
All right, properly moved, I have a second. I'll second it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? While we're on that, council, when we vote, I want to hear a voice and I want to see a hand. So if you're voting yea, I want to hear yea. If you're voting nay, I want to hear nay. Because there are some instances I'm not hearing or seeing anything and we want the record clear as how each of us are voting. Respectfully, please. All right, we'll go to the minutes. We'll take the first for the approval of February 10th, a special call meeting minutes. Give you a minute to review those, re-review those. All right, if I don't have any changes, I'll take a motion for approval. All right, I move that we approve the minutes for the February 10th, 2020, special call meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Move to approval of the Jan, excuse me, February 24th, 2020, council meeting minutes. Take a moment from there, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There was some errors in, at number one. Didn't get a chance to look at that until today. And motion number one was not made by councilmember George Turner, actually was made by the mayor to remove those items. And the motion for the resolution of the charter amendment for discussion only was actually for discussion and the mayor added only. And according to this, councilmember Rob Turner seconded it. He actually made the motion, so this needs to be cleaned up.
Okay, so on the first part, number one is that the removal of the, the council, not the council, but the
The appointments.
Appointments. That was made by me.
Right.
Okay. The second part or the second inquiry that you, you mentioned.
Yeah, I made the motion for the code enforcement for discussion only. And the second one was for the resolution for charter amendment was made by councilman Rob Turner for discussion. And the mayor corrected that to be discussion only. And it was seconded. I don't know who seconded it, but it has mayor, has councilmember Rob Turner as offering the second when he actually made the motion. That's correct.
Okay.
That, that just needs to be cleaned up. I guess the video can help you.
If you would like, you can defer the minutes to the next meeting and I can go back and review the tape because that's the way I wrote it.
Move to defer the minutes from February 24th, 2020.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor for the deferral? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Who made the second? I couldn't hear. Okay.
All right, we'll move with approval of February 26th, 2020, special call meeting for minutes. Okay. Council, you see any changes, updates?
I have a question.
All right.
Motion number two, are you saying that councilman Rob Turner seconded that motion?
Motion two was for the development authority.
Right.
That should be mayor as making the motion and Rob Turner made the second. Does it say Jimmy Clanton?
I don't know. It doesn't mention what action councilman Rob Turner took. That's why I was asking, did he second that? Because it doesn't say, it just
Yeah, he seconded it.
Official non-voting member, councilman Rob Turner. So I guess it should say that he seconded it.
They all add that.
Okay, any other changes?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where it talks about in motion two that there was a discussion regarding the, my appointment and the mayor explained that the member did not want to serve until the seat was vacant. I do believe I had more conversation there. That I want reflected in the, in the minutes.
Okay, you can let me know what you want to have reflected in the minutes and I can add it, just kind of summarize them.
Okay, so you don't want me to do that now?
You can.
Okay. So I'd like to have that I was sorely displeased with the mayor's decision not to allow my appointment to go through. And I think I said that, Mayor, do you remember us having that kind of
Yes, ma'am.
Conversation? Okay.
I do remember you being sorely displeased.
I will add that to the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further? Seeing none, then I'll take an approval for the minutes as res with the amendments.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Move for approval with the noted corrections of the minutes.
All right, properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved, the amendments. We have no presentations, we'll go moving to our appointments. I'll start with staff and then we'll move down the list of what we have here and then I'll, I'll give some, some passouts and some input from council. So we're at point, folks, now where I like to start to have council and mayor and senior staff to make a search for a permanent city manager. With this, I'm going to offer to council the ability to interview, have a conversation, screen, take our time, and pick a long-term person with regards to being city manager. I'm gonna go beyond what the charter requires me to do, which is to appoint. And you all confirm, I want an active stake for everybody with regards to this particular council, particularly council. And we'll do this in several ways. We'll go through GMA, we'll go through Jacobs, and we'll also have a, if desired by councilman, independent national search so that we can have the best person selected with regards to that permanent position. With that, we'll have to, to have someone that's ready to ascend that seat, that can at least cover us until that position is done. With that, there's two ways of doing it, either as a acting city manager or as interim city manager. And then we'll have someone that is keeping the ship stable until we collectively decide who that's going to be, because that's a very important position for us. So with that, I want to make a motion to appoint as acting city manager, Mr. Pledge Joyner, until we decide on a permanent city manager. And I'll take a second for that.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question in reference to, I guess, the titles. What's the difference, I guess, in acting and interim or deputy?
Good question, councilman. Acting is actually in the charter, so I use the actual term that was in the charter and it says acting city manager. Interim is what we use with regards to persons like Mr. Wayne Wright, who's sitting in the audience, Julian Jackson, that particular piece of it. And then deputy is quite frankly still the same position, which is the assistant city manager. So those are the three differences, you know, between them. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, what would the difference be between allowing Mr. Joyner to remain as our deputy city manager versus you appointing him as the acting city manager? What would be the difference in what, what he does if he had that acting instead of deputy?
Okay, then that gives him full responsibility to act on the authority of, of mayor and council with regards to everything that needs to be done in the city. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure thing.
If you make this appointment as acting and this person would be in consideration for the permanent, does that give that person some type of advantage?
I don't, I don't think
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, you know, rhetorically, you say, maybe, maybe not, that could send the wrong message. And the last time we had this opening, the Jacobs sent someone, since they are still covering that position for us, although I know we want to move into it becoming a city employee and I definitely want that to happen, but until we get there, I was looking more towards Jacob sending us someone to fill the seat until either Jacob supplied someone or we picked someone, is what I had in mind. And with that, we haven't even officially stated the vacancy of the city manager and that needed to be addressed at some point. Maybe I'm in the wrong place for that right now, but it needs to be addressed. But I would rather see someone else who would not be in contention for the seat to sit there.
Well, my opinion of that, Councilman Turner, is that everybody has to write, interview and compete. I don't think we should penalize a person with regards to if they desire or not desire to move to the next level. I, I don't think that would be right at all. I'll give a very specific example. Depending upon the culture that you're from or what you plan on, you know, how, how your management style is, if you've noticed, we've allowed all employees inside and out to compete for positions that we have here. I'll give you a very specific example. Mr. Christopher Wheeler, he started as a city planner, then he interviewed just like everybody else for the director's job that he has today. And it would have been unjust to not allow him to, you know, compete for the job on that end of it. I feel the same way about any employee, it's not, it's not just Pledge Joyner, it's anybody. So if they're, if they're in a particular role and they want to interview and compete for the job, I don't think it gives them any more or less opportunity to win the job or not, because it still has to be appointed by mayor, it still has to be confirmed by council. So we're in this, we're in, we're in the ship together. But holding, holding against the person, I don't think that would be, and, and we're not talking personally, we're just talking position.
By no means.
Talking position.
Yeah.
But that, that wouldn't be fair.
Yeah. If the person is still in a position that council does not control as deputy city manager. And the same with the example you gave with Mr. Wheeler, that is not one that the city council has any say as to who's appointed to that position. But just from a personal standpoint, I think it does give the person an advantage when you're acting in that capacity. So, and that may, may not be appropriate.
Thank you for your opinion.
You.
Okay. Any other further comments?
I do have one question in reference to when Mr. Jackson left. Wasn't Mr. Joyner just taking over his responsibilities anyway?
Hmm, I'm
I'm just saying, so with him being gone, what were the duties of the city manager? So we just had an open spot, he wasn't doing anything related. I'm just, I guess, I'm thinking on the line of, okay, we have a president and a vice president. If the president is gone, does the vice president take over? So that doesn't work in this instance? As a deputy instead of an assistant?
Well, if you want me to, which I'm fully prepared to do, I am more than happy to just name him interim city manager and just, you know, keep it moving from there. But I wanted to use the actual term that was in the, in the charter, which is acting city manager. So, but to specifically answer your question, I don't think any of us would want a position that we were called one thing and then was doing the work for another. And that, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be right either. So to, to answer your question, no, it's, it's a, it's a higher, it's a higher duty with regards to being the acting city manager versus being a deputy city manager.
Mr. Mayor, how long do you anticipate the process being for us to find a permanent city manager?
Depends on council. It could be two months, three months, four months, depends on council. I'm, I'm, I'm ready to start interviewing as soon as you all are. So the, the process at this point would be to go out on a national search, to go out through GMA and then go out through Jacobs themselves, because they have a strong network of candidates also.
So could we not ask Jacobs to send us someone until we did that? Did that process of looking for our, our own person? And it may sound redundant, but I just want to make sure I'm clear as to what I'm asking in the answer that you give, okay?
Not a worry. We can, and the person they're gonna send is Pledge Joyner.
Thank you.
Okay, any further question? Yes, sir.
Since this isn't a personnel issue, it seems like we have some concerns up here. Is it possible that we can have an executive session over this? Talk about it.
Sure we can. All right, then I'm going to move that we take this particular position on the, on the agenda to executive session. Would I have a second?
Second.
All right. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, we'll move that to, to executive session. The next, in no particular order, folks, I'm gonna pass out what councilman Turner, councilman George Turner asked for at the last meeting is descriptions of the committees and then the ones that we had on deck and then we'll just continue to move forward individually for each committee. And then we'll come to each one as we sit. As I said, there's no, it might be out of order with regards to what's on the, on your sheet versus what I put out. All right. Okay. So council, we're gonna try to do this in a fashion where that we can have input with regards to every Oh, there we go. So you should have the, the citizen advisory committee. It starts there and then the police advisory committee page, it starts here. So what I want to do, folks, is kind of match, I want, I want two goals here. One is that as we look at the actual, the positions themselves along with the appointments, my goal is twofold. One, councilman George Turner, I'm trying to adhere to what you ask about, but you also volunteered to, and I know you did because this is what you do, write some of the description yourself along with the council persons that's, that's here. So if there's a duplication, that's, that's fine, but we'll go through each one here and there may be one or two that didn't have a description and then we will move that to the next meeting because I have at least one more that needs to have, you know, further discussion on as we continue. So we'll start with the post office committee. And on your citizen advisory committee sheet is one, two, three, one, two, three down and councilman George Turner, you may have more extended to this. So on the post office committee, he's charged with looking at ways to bring a dedicated post office and zip code to the city of Stonecrest. That's their charge. I'm gonna yield to councilman George Turner because I, I thought he would have more extra or, or agree with the same.
I actually submitted an ordinance declaring the post office committee and I sent it to Mr. Pledge Joyner, who said that he would be taking care of the agenda for today because our city clerk was absent a few days last week. And on Friday, when I checked, city clerk was back and not have any indication that she had the data, so I sent it again. And none of that is included here. So as far as I'm concerned, and, and, and the intent was to make it available to the public as well, whereas the agenda should be published on the website, for my money, three days in advance, but at least 24 hours in advance. And, and, and what comes to us now is a one sentence as to what these committees should represent. I think it is a short change in our process of bringing these committees in line and that is what we've done in the past. Whenever we developed a committee, we made sure that it conformed with the formatting of state law, of city ordinances, and the description of it and gives a place for the sign-off by the mayor and to be attested to by the city clerk. And all of that is totally ignored here except for maybe one item. The only one that I saw on the agenda was the finance committee, which has that formatting and it was complete, but the rest of it was left off. I also submitted one for an overlay committee, one for the, like you have here mentioned, the post office committee and the Browns and Mayor Penola overlay committee. This just totally neglects all of that.
So I'll respond. First, I think you are in error when you say we've done every one of them like that in the past. We have not. We haven't had that level of extensiveness with regards to being able to have an ordinance or resolution for them. We haven't done that. That's the first thing. Second is there is no malice on our part to omit any of the work that you've done. No malice on our part, all right? If you've, which I'm sure you have, that's why I mentioned first, if you've sent something and you wanted to add it to this, you know, this was my attempt to be able to have a description because that's what you say you wanted. I gave a description. Now it's ordinance and resolutions and everything else that you want with it and I still don't even have a problem with that. No issue at all, as a matter of fact. However, make up your mind. So when we, we come to the meeting, I, I, I understand completely what it is that you want because I'm trying to, I'm trying to do what you want. So to say that we've done this in the past wouldn't, 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 wouldn't quite be accurate because we have some things that we're sitting here with regards to having not done that in the past. However, I would like to ask Madam Clerk, would you happen to have the information that councilman Turner is talking about?
Yes, I received it yesterday at 2:00 PM.
Okay. Kind of difficult, councilman, at 2:00 on Sunday.
When I talked to When I talked to your deputy city manager, who told me on Wednesday that he would be in charge of getting the agenda out, I gave it to him.
All right.
And then when I inquired of the city clerk, since now she's back, said she didn't have it, so I'll send it to you instead of this city, instead of the city deputy manager, deputy city manager, rather. And I beg to differ, is that, that was one item that was challenged by a previous councilwoman that we did not have an ordinance for, and that was only one, and that was the finance committee. The rest of them, you can find half of them online, and the others you will find that they were submitted as ordinances to be approved by the mayor and city council for the Splas Committee. That was done in great detail, describing what the committee would, would do, who would be on it, and by what right they had to form, and all of that was done in ordinance format. The same thing with the transportation committee. We did it in great format, submitted it for approval. The same thing we did for the Arabian Mountain overlay. It was in a great four-page format that I believe is necessary for a committee to function. You've gotta have rules by which you operate. And it's not a matter of what I want, what I want is for us to follow the rules. And that is the rule for formatting and forming committees. You don't just put the committee together and say, well, we'll see what they do. You've gotta have it spelled out and approved and signed off by someone in this city who has the authority to sign off on it, and declare it a formatted and approved committee with specific functions. Otherwise, how do you hold them accountable? It's gotta be done. And again, it's not what I want. I just want us to follow the rules, and that should be what we all want, in formatting and rule following.
Okay. So having said that, we will take all of these off and follow exactly what you say. So I'm gonna motion that we start over again and follow the rules and procedures that we have, so that everybody will be clear on exactly what it is, and make sure that I'm on the right page, Councilman, because I would not like to do this a third time. Probably move in second. All right. Any further? Not a worry.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Finance committee is on there, and the ordinance is attached. Can we not move forward with that one?
No, ma'am. Any further questions? Yes, ma'am? No, ma'am? That's my answer.
Okay. Can you give some sort of explanation if this one is on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
And the ordinance is there, the description is there?
So specifically, Councilwoman, I see people on the suggested committee members that I don't agree with, so I want to do them all in the right way, in decency and order, as Councilman George Turner has suggested.
Ma'am?
You may.
And that is why we wanted them published more before we got here on this dais. We're handing this right here, right now. If it had been published three days in advance, or at least 24 hours in advance, we could have dealt with all of that before we got here. And that is the intent with the rest of them, to get them on the list, so we can review them in advance. If there's something we think might be out of order, we can deal with it before we get here. Now, this is the only one that was put on there three days in advance, three, however many days in advance, and we had a chance to see that one in its entirety. And if there was an issue with it, either we deal with it in advance or come here ready to deal with it. And we don't come ready to, didn't come ready to deal with any of the others, except for the ones that I know I put together. I knew they were there, and it was sent to the deputy city manager on Thursday, but they're not here now, so the rest of the council hadn't had the privilege of, yes, you have. I sent them to you individually.
Who are you talking to?
I sent them to you, you, and the rest of the council. The two, the two that I worked on.
Councilman, we are listening to you. Nobody has said a word, and, 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 I'm giving you all the conversation and rope you want to have. I just, I just disagree with you.
Okay, then I can show you the email that is right now.
This is quite all right then.
I did, I did. I emailed them to you.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, yeah.
We're in discussion.
But we have a discussion, yeah.
And you have reiterated again that we haven't done our job. I get that. Oh, I understand. Now, this motion is so, so that we can do our job, and we'll have it, we'll have it the way, so I won't put it on you, not the way you want it, but we'll have it the way you want it. I don't know how else to say.
Well, again, I want us to follow some, some guidelines.
Okay.
And I think we have failed to follow those guidelines, and they need to be brought into order. And since we on the third, maybe the fourth time, we need to make sure that we get that perfectly clear as to what we are asking for, and that what we're asking for is Mr. City Attorney, is, is reasonable and correct on the way it should be done. Any opinion on that?
Yes, sir. I mean, the, you can certainly do it the way you've outlined it, Councilman Turner. It's, it's prerogative of the council to do it that way, to create an ordinance that delineates the duties, the responsibilities, the parameters for each of the committees, and appoints the members. I mean, that, that's certainly acceptable.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the record, there are five committees listed out of this group that do not represent the names that I submitted. Only two, really only one committee, two committees are accurately represented. Of all the committees that we've seen on the various lists that we've had, because there are some committees that are not on here that we've seen, but I just want the record to reflect that there are five committees that don't have the names that I submitted for appointment. And so we can deal with that, I guess, when we deal with the rec, the rest of it, but I just wanted it to be on record tonight, that there are five out of the ones that are here.
Okay. If you don't mind, Councilwoman, we're still in discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me the committee and the names of those people that are missing.
Your public safety, which I guess is the same as the police advisory.
Okay. Who's the person?
Can I submit all of those to you again on the list that I did, instead of calling these names publicly?
Okay.
And then we can present them when we present them out? Is that fair? Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Still in discussion.
Okay, so the Parks Committee, Education Committee.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thought you were gonna wait.
No, the names, just the names. I can give you the names of the committees, but I'm just...
How about we just do it all together then?
That'd be fine with me.
And we'll know.
That'd be fine.
And, um...
Thank you.
You and I can do it together.
Thank you.
We'll know. Not a worry. I apologize for the omission. All right, we're still in discussion. Motion on the table to, um...
I've got two more things, if you don't mind. I'd just like to note that the names submitted for the finance committee
Uh-huh.
Have been the same names, the first, second, and third round that we've attempted to reinstitute the finance committee. So everyone has had multiple opportunities to see those names, as they have not changed. I'd also like to mention that in the list that you handed out just a few minutes ago, there are some committees that do not have two council members on each, and I believe that we, we went through that one time as well, and made sure, I thought we made sure that every committee had two council members. But I'm looking at one, two, three, four, five committees that still do not have two council members on each.
So let me ask Mr. City Attorney, since I am a member of council, and when I'm on these committees, I'm a member of council. I count it myself as a member of council for these committees.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll read from the, the relevant provision. It's section 2.14 of the charter. No member of any board, commission, or authority of the city shall hold any elective office in the city or DeKalb County. However, up to two members of the city council, including the mayor, may be appointed by the mayor to serve as ex officio members of such boards, commissions, or authorities. So...
These aren't boards, commissions, or authorities. These are committee over, these are citizen oversight committees, and there's actually a city code ordinance that was written, and specifically says that the mayor is ex officio on the citizen advisory committees, which you won't find in the charter, you'll find it in the city code.
Right. The, the advisory committees are provided for in section 3.01 of the charter, and it talks about the citizen advisory committee. Now, the, the boards and commissions are certainly more formal than the citizen, than the oversight committees, and those are under the supervision of the mayor. And so those are, they have less independence than the, the boards and commissions. So we're calling these oversight committees, then that's, that's just altogether different, and the, the mayor actually has supervisory authority over those committees under the charter, under section 3.01, so...
All right, so can you say that one more time? So according to the charter, oversight committees, or, I'm sorry, it doesn't say oversight, does it? What's the wording?
It does say oversight.
Says oversight, okay. Oversight committees are supervised by the mayor, right? Created, established, abolished, right? By the, right? Yeah, I read it a few times. By the mayor. But it does not mention membership in that section. The city code that was written by Tom Curry specifies that oversight committees, that the mayor is an ex officio on the oversight committees, as that provision in the charter does not go into detail on the membership.
Yes.
So the thing I have in question, Mr. City Attorney, is that since I'm a member of council, and since I supervise the committees per the charter, and I sit as one of the council members on the committee.
What, what I think we discussed before is that the way it's written, you would not, however, the practical impact is fundamentally the same, since if you're not sitting as a member of the committee, but you're still supervising the committee, I mean, I don't see the fundamental distinction, but in a very strict and technical sense, you would not sit as a member of the committee.
Okay. There's something else up for me, please. Up to two members? Okay. Up to two members?
Exactly.
No further than two members of council?
And it could be one?
Oh, it can be one.
If, if it says up to two.
Okay.
Right. That's not what the city code says, so I guess we need to get both, and just make sure that we are on the same page, because the ordinance for the city code does not say up to. It says two members shall be appointed.
Well, and, and I do have to look at them side by side, because obviously the charter would trump a, a code section, so to the extent there was anything inconsistent with the charter in a city ordinance, that ordinance would have to yield to the charter. It's like playing spades, and the charter's the big joker, so I mean, you just can't, so, so the, the ordinance would have to yield. But I would have to, and I don't have that ordinance in front of me, so I would have to look at them side by side to determine the extent to which there was any inconsistency between the two. But if there was an inconsistency, the charter wins every time.
Wonderful. I think we should definitely get the two of them. The city code was written by Tom Curry, obviously after the city was formed, so it was, I would hope that he would have clarified that in that code, but if not, it's worth taking a look at, for sure.
Upon order, Mr. Mayor, at this point, there is a motion on the table, and I guess we can go ahead and call it a question, being that we, there is much work evidently to be done with these committees to just, you know, and, and, and bear in mind the fact that the mayor appoints the committees, and council confirms the committees. If there's no appointment, then there's nothing for us to confirm. So that being the case, you know, I would like to call the question, the motion that is on the floor.
All right. It's called a question, which is to, the motion was to delay all of them, till we hammer out exactly where we want to go, who the folks are, who the members are, if mayor can sit or not sit, does the charter trump the city code, and, and such. So the motion is for the deferral.
Upon order.
Yes, sir.
In order to call for the question, you need a majority vote of two-thirds.
No. Mr. City Manager?
I mean, Attorney?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Good. So with that, we, with that, uh...
I'm just not ready on one question.
Okay.
And that was a question of the finance committee, since it has adhered to all of the, the rules, I think we should hear it.
So here's where you doesn't, as the mayor appoints, and you, as council, confirm, I'm not satisfied with the appointees. Thus, we can't have a committee that I don't appoint the appointees for you to confirm. So if we need to take a vote for the two-thirds, or do we take the vote for, just to defer as we've been talking?
Patrol, my objection.
All right. So having said that, the, we call for question. Question has been called. All in favor of the deferral, say aye.
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 Sorry.
No worries. All opposed? All right, the committees have been deferred. Madam Clerk? I have bass in my voice. I need to be called a sir.
Yes, sir. I think I said, yes, mayor.
Oh, I apologize.
But she did have Mary in the minutes. Mary. Mary Larry.
Ratted you out, see?
In fact, I think when you introduced yourself to, to me, you said Larry liked Mary.
Yeah, I did, I did. That's true. All right. All right, so we will go to, uh, probably comments.
Ms. Susan Lee?
I am Susan Lee, Parks of Stonecrest, city, citizen of Stonecrest. This is a very serious issue I'm going to bring to you. I attended an event at the Lou Walker Center last week, sponsored by Senators Tanya Anderson, Gloria Butler, and Emmanuel Jones. What came to light at this event is Senate Bill 469, supported by these seniors, senators. When asked how this bill came about, Senator Emmanuel Jones said, "Four of your city council members came to me to draw up Senate Bill 469." Senate Bill 469 changes our current charter and how we are governed. Senate Bill 469 has restructured our charter to remove the mayor's executive powers, have an unelected city manager as chief executive that can be removed by city council at any time. The mayor's role would be ceremonial only, kissing babies and cutting ribbons. Two areas of concern for me are, with the current four city council members' unprofessional behavior, seeming not to know the issues to be voted on, and claiming they didn't receive this or that, nothing positive would happen. We, we would be paying them $20,000 a year to accomplish nothing, a total waste of taxpayers' money. Second, business owners will not bring their company to a city that has four council members putting personal concerns ahead of city business. Which one of these council members have presented a project that was in the best interest of Stonecrest? We need a strong mayor with executive powers, not city council that struggles to reach a consensus. Mr. Mayor Larry has a vision for our city, and his visions are coming to fruition. Fifty-five percent of Stonecrest residents voted for the current charter. Four council members want to change our charter to suit them without consulting the citizens. We have a petition online to stop Georgia Senate Bill 469. I am asking all concerned citizens to go to an address that I have on sheet of paper to access the petition and sign it. I am asking all concerned citizens to go to an address that I have uh, on sheet of paper to access the petition and sign it. Thank you, I am a concerned citizen of Stonecrest.
Mister Dave Marcus?
Good evening, y'all. I've signed that petition, by the way. Um, I just want to address one thing, and I first want to, I guess, command the mayor on the expansion of how to hire the next city manager, which is a real important post. I'm not sure exactly a hundred percent of what I heard, but what I think, I hope I heard, was that you'll post the opening and the job description, of course, on the city website, so all of us can take a look. And I think also the criteria, you want somebody with this years' experience, somebody this big, you know, whatever it might be. So there's objective uh, ways that somebody can know whether to apply or not, and y'all can know how to filter people out. I'd like to see that criteria include some good experience, five or ten years managing a city that is the city we, we want to become, the city where we're going to grow to become during that person's tenure, which I hope will be longer than our first two city managers. Um, because we need, yeah, we're growing, we're looking at public works, we're looking at police, we need a person who has had experience with a big organization, in my opinion. Um, it would also be great, though, if it was a local resident. So if, if you weighted it, so local residents or somebody willing to relocate and be a local resident and have skin in the game, if there's some way to do that, I think that would be great, too. I also think I heard using a national search firm as the, the body to gather all the resumes, to go out and look for people across the country who might be interested and qualified, and bring them to you with recommendations of which ones to interview, so that, you know, they're doing the heavy lifting, and y'all are, are interviewing, I don't know, three, five, seven of the top candidates across the country. And I just want to say, a process like that, particularly if as transparent it, as it can be, even though this is a personnel matter, would not only be a good way to do it, but we need some restoration of confidence in the government of Stonecrest. Um, that might help a little. There's a lot of things that could help a little, it'll be a slow process, but I just wanted to say that that's what I hope you'll do, and thank you, Mister Mayor, for just going outside what you narrowly have to do and involving the council in the decision.
That's all the public comments that I have.
All right. Uh, we have no public uh, hearing and no business, no new business. Uh, under old business, um, the council ask, uh, with regards to an annexation, um, the revenue stream with regards to uh, those two particular areas, uh, uh, counsel, if you can just think back on the map. Um, and uh, Mister John and I met with uh, the uh, tax commissioner and his staff, and with regards to being able to give us uh, some uh, a general information with regards to what that revenue would be, and I wanted to share that with council. Um, there was two areas. One was the big splash of areas, if I'm not splas, but splash of area, um, that had zero residents, and the tax index for that revenue to Stonecrest, if we, if we, you know, properly handled it coming in, was seventy-two thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Um, the residents with regards to, uh, if I recall correctly, counsel, it was four hun- excuse me, five hundred and one residents, um, that was in that particular area, and that revenue was two hundred and ninety-one thousand, five thirty. Uh, I will send this, of course, via um, uh, email to you, but I wanted to cover that because that was a question that council had, uh, with regards to the revenue, which leads us into um, this very short conversation, but not long, is that, so that um, the actual citizens would understand at the same time, and all of us would be on the same page. Um, we cannot collect that revenue until we have this millage cap lifted, so that we can actually say that what services um, 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 that we would be delivering, and also have um, certainly public meetings, uh, very detailed public meetings with regards to what would be happening, um, uh, with regards to being able to take over certain services. So I said that to say, um, the, the, the council, uh, and the general public will have very, very detailed information and on um, the decision-making process with regards to uh, the entire scope of services, because uh, of the, of the um, of what we have to do, this is very minute, but uh, it really starts us off at, you know, where uh, we're going to grow, how we're going to grow, and the process by which we grow. Does that make sense? Counsel? All right. So we'll move to number B, uh, ordinance authorizing conveyance, which is the second reading and approval.
I have to get to it.
No worries. I came up on you kind of quick, you know? While she's looking, how y'all doing tonight? How y'all doing? Good. Glad to have it, glad to hear it, too.
Mister Mayor, I have a question about the annexation.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, there was a, in the packet that said some, sorry, let me pull it back up. There was a list of committee members um, in the packet.
Or annexation?
Yeah, it was annexation committee uh, that you had in there.
Well, I'll have to look at that. Uh, Councilwoman Cobble, I didn't see. Let me look. An annexation committee?
Report of the Georgia House Annexation, Deannexation, and Incorporation Study Committee. Has the study committee members, ooh, it has a table of contents.
Are you, are you, that's not this year.
Well, it's in the packet, right? So I wanted to ask you, that is inaccurate, I ca- I think it's old, which is, that's what I was trying to mention, that it was in the packet, attached to the annexation documents, but some of those members don't serve anymore um, in the General Assembly, and so it appeared to be an old document.
Oh, okay.
So I was just wondering what um, is there a new one, or kind of what was the purpose of this? Was there something you were trying to?
No, I'm just sure it just creeped in some kind of way.
I, I think that you put it with the last ones, just to show how you handled the last one and the different rules that were.
Right, 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 that's correct. But when I was on, that, that's exactly it, thank you, Madam Clerk. I was, I was using that as an example of um, uh, and to be quite honest with you, at this point, uh, Councilwoman, I can't rem- recall what the example I was using. Um, but I know it had to do something with uh, we were doing.
The different methods of annexation.
There is someone waving, uh, I apologize. City Attorney, I'm, I'm, I'm down here scrambling for the paper.
Not a problem. These are members of a study committee that was formed, um, not this current session, but the last session, which the session is two year. Last session. That study committee is who authorized the Paul Benson study that was recently released on annexation, deannexation, incorporation into cab county.
All right, and I was, I was giving examples of that, that's why I, 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 I put it in the pack. It was for, for example purposes only. How about those kangaroos? Oh, y'all don't know about that? So uh, uh, some that do, some that don't, uh, they are on a six-game winning streak. How about that? You ready? Thank you, because that was my last, that was the last thing I could think of.
Before you start? I'm sorry.
Do we have this in our packet?
Um, I'm not su- did Earl Taylor send it to you all? Was the authori- it's a ordinance authorizing agreement of sale with Urban Redevelopment Agency of the City of Stonecrest, and it was in our February twenty-fourth packet? I don't know if he included, because I had to ask him for that one as well.
Second read.
It's the second read.
I know, but I, yeah, I couldn't find it in the first read, so maybe that's, and I said I'd get it between there and here, and I was unable to find it, so maybe I missed it. That's why I'm asking, was it documented, sent to us? And I'll take the blame if I didn't find it and if it was sent to me.
I don't see it being sent to you, and the one that I received, the latest version, um, I conformed it to you, but it was sent to um, me and Plez, uh, Denmark's office, um, Mister Ed Wall, and then Joy Keeler, who was um, here, but it was from Earl Taylor, the attorney that we sat with, and we signed all those documents last time.
And again, the heading is what?
It is. Ordinance authorizing agreement of sale with Urban Redevelopment Agency of the City of Stonecrest. And this is the process called conveyance.
Madam Clerk, this is the same as the one that uh, we signed for last two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Any way you can work your magic and send that to Councilman George Turner as we sit? Or is it too big?
It's on the way.
All right.
I'll see, I'll take the blame if I missed it.
No worries. All right, uh, you actually physically make the second read, Madam Clerk?
She just did.
She just did? Is that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Excellent. Oh.
Very short.
It is short.
I missed.
Okay, um, we're, we're, we're good, Mister, I mean, uh, Councilman Turner?
The third read.
I, I didn't hear it.
Um, please repeat it, uh, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance authorizing agreement of sale with Urban Redevelopment Agency of the City of Stonecrest.
Almost missed it again, but that was it, right?
That was it.
Good deal. All right, um, folks, you've heard the uh, second uh, reading for the uh, ordinance authorization for the conveyance. I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve, Mister Mayor.
All right, I'll second it. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
This is probably for you, uh, Mister Denmark. The one, two, three. The seventh, whereas.
Whereas the purchaser proposes?
Uh-huh. Can you explain that paragraph?
Sure, the um.
About levying a millage or?
Well, tha- that's, that's in number two. I'll start from the beginning and I'll get to that part. In the beginning, the, the U R A is going to be, they're issuing the bonds and they'll actually acquire title, but through this, through the agreement that was going to be executed, the city will get the title, and in exchange, we'll agree to make payments on the bonds. And so, and we'll, we'll.
We the U R A?
No, we the city, I'm sorry. And um, it said, uh, purchaser, purchaser being the city, the issuer is the U R A, the purchaser is the City of Stonecrest. Um, purchaser will agree to make installment payments of the purchase price to the issuer in amounts sufficient to enable the issuer, that being the U R A, to pay the principal, um, yeah, uh, principal of, and premium, if any, of the interest on the bonds, uh, when due. Then, so we're going to just pay the uh, make installment payments on the amount, pay back the bonds, but if necessary, we agree to um, to, to levy a, a, a millage and then use that to pay it back, but that's only if necessary.
So the purchaser is the U R A?
Then the purchaser, the City of Stonecrest, the issuer, the, the U R A is issuing the bonds, where the purchaser, because we're taking it from the U R A.
So why isn't the U R A responsible for paying the bond? Why is the city taking responsibility?
Short answer is the, the U R A doesn't have money to pay the bonds. Um, the, the, the City of Stonecrest has the resources uh, to pay uh, the bonds. The, the U R A issues the bonds, um, and the bonds have to be paid back. Who's going to pay it back? The U R A doesn't have the resources to do that. The city will pay, and that's why we'll have, it'll be our buildings, and we're going to pay for it.
All right, any further, counsel?
Help me understand the three point three five mil limit. Is that something we're seeing the rates will, will definitely increase, or in the same area, in the same area?
No, that, that's, that's um, um, if necessary, we'd do that to, to pay it back, but I mean, obviously, when we undertook this, we understood that we were paying right now a certain amount to lease space. And so um, so we'll continue to pay whatever we were paying, but instead of leasing, we'll now be paying back the bonds. And by our math, we'll be paying less than, or, or a similar number, but not just for this building, but for two buildings, Sam's and Seers. But, so we have the resource to do it because we're doing it right now anyway. But the, the issue is, to the extent, and this is just to make everybody feel secure, we're saying, but if all else fails, we'll, you know, yeah, the, this millage and we'll levy the taxes and so on and so forth, but you know, tha- that's just there to give everybody assurances, because lawyers tend to draft these documents, and they tend to be a nervous bunch.
So that's a worst case?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just to the city clerk, I did have the document under another name, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes. Councilmember Turner, what name was it under? Because it took me forever to find it, too.
Pull it out again. Uh, matter of fact, they sent, they, they sent a correction, and they scratched through authorization of conveyance and put another name on top of it.
Right, okay.
All right, very good. All questions answered? All hearts and minds clear? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you. It passes. Um, counsel, we voted for uh, uh, executive session, uh, but I misspoke, if y'all don't mind, please. I meant executive session for personnel next meeting.
We need a change?
Um, I'll ask the um, the king of procedures, Mister George Turner.
I know you said this was. I, I, I mean, you confused me. So you confused me with facts.
So uh, I uh, we uh, uh, called for an executive session, and what I meant was to call for an executive session for personnel next meeting, not, not, not this meeting. So do we need to restate that for a uh?
I would, I would say so.
All right. So uh, if counsel will uh, allow it, uh, make a substitute motion, I think this is what that would be with regards for our executive session for the meeting of, the date is. Okay, you have a second?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Or uh, March twenty-third. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, properly move to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So we have an executive session for next, for uh, for, for next meeting. Mister City Manager?
I have nothing.
All right. Mister City Attorney?
Nothing to see there, Mister Mayor.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Um, I will be registering mayor and council for G M A conference tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. So if you have not sent me your classes, please do. If you have not sent me your hotels, please do, and give me first, second, and choice, first, second, and third choice classes. They fill up really quick, and I hope to be out of here by nine thirty.
Excellent, excellent. Mister Farrell? We're good? All right. Councilwoman Grimes? Yeah, so this is uh, I kind of cough y'all go out with that.
You did, because I'm always.
Yeah.
Right before you, so, okay.
This is the portion of the meeting toward the end.
I know where we are, I just always wait to the end, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no.
Wait near y'all. Okay, couple of things, um, I'd like to say thank you um, to Meghan for making the conference happen for me last week when I. when I attended the first Cities United Conference. Didn't know anything about what was required for newly elected officials, but thank you, Meghan. Once I got that slot open, you made it happen, and I appreciate that so much. Those three days were absolutely overload. It was quite a bit to take in, but I am so appreciative of the opportunity to be there, to get those classes that are required. So it wasn't a vacation. There will be a D5 University meeting, just waiting to hear from one person to let me know whether, what the specific date will be, so stay tuned for that. Again, please keep Ms. Pat, who's the widower of boss who was murdered at the TikTok convenience store, keep her family in your prayers. It seems that she's going to attempt to keep the store open. There was a community, a small community event on this past Saturday, but looking to raise money to offer for a reward, so that maybe that would help some of the people who say they have information about this murder to be brought to the, to the public. I think that's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Counselman?
You know, census time on the 12th of this month, you should be getting your cards at your home address. You can go online and complete it. You can call it in and do it by phone. You can send the document back when they send you the form itself. Or you can go into one of the centers in DeKalb County. I don't have their addresses yet, but I will get them for you. If you fill out one of these cards, you ask for a yard sign. I was told it'd be ready this week, and as soon as they come in, we'll see if we can get them on the website, let you know where to pick up your yard sign. Some of them will be delivered, and some you have to pick up at senior centers in DeKalb County. And tell all of your friends and everybody you know, please, please, please participate in the 2020 Census Complete Count. It means a lot of financing for the DeKalb County. It means representation for the DeKalb County. And a lot of the services that you receive, you have been traditionally leaving money on the table to the tune of 25%, 27% technically, and that's for 10 years. Folks, that's a lot of money we can use to support the city and the county, so please participate.
Yes, you may make a comment. Thank you, Ms. Pat.
Just inviting you as usual to our monthly cultural exchange breakfast on, on this Saturday, the 14th. It'll be at the Greater Travelers Rest House of Hope at 9:46, 50 Flat Shoals Parkway. We'll have a representative from the Secretary of State's office bringing the new voting machines in to demonstrate, but also answer any questions, concerns you have about those machines and the upcoming vote for May, well, March, really, is the next time, first time we'll be voting. And also, I've invited the candidates running for office just to come out and say hello thing, the new candidates as well as incumbents, to come out and talk a little bit about their platform and the issues that they are interested in. And so you can come out and talk to them and meet and greet with them also. But most importantly, you come out and you have the best salmon cakes by Ms. Marty Garrison on the planet, so come out and get some salmon cakes, too.
Man, all right. Councilwoman?
I just want to piggyback off of Councilman Turner. First of all, those salmon cakes are bomb, no doubt. And also, just reminding everybody that DeKalb does have Saturday early voting, so please take advantage of that. Want to make sure that we have enough numbers there so we can continue to have weekend early voting. Just make sure you spend some time on Saturday if you can't make it during the week to drop by and early vote.
All right. I'll be brief. I had the, the great opportunity today to have a conversation with our Secretary of State leader, Secretary Brent Raffensperger. And we are going to do a couple of things from his office. At an upcoming city council meeting, if not, if not the 23rd, the second week in April, he's going to deploy through Representative Vernon Jones the machines at our meeting, so you all can see the machines firsthand as to how they work, what they look like, touch, feel, that whole particular thing. So I thought that was pretty good. The other thing, this is for you, Councilman George Turner, I want to share. You may already have this, Councilman, but it's a fair count. Young lady made a presentation to us at the Capitol today regarding black men count and some other things. You know her already?
Actually, they have partnered with New Birth, and New Birth is a census center, and Fair Count is a part of that.
Oh, good deal. Excellent. I knew you were on it. Last couple of things, and I'll make it brief. The, I'm open for any meeting, anybody want to have, whether it's neighborhood, whether it's individual, anything that you want to know with regards to the future of the city, where we're going, what we're doing, what, what plans are in place. I want to be able to make sure that I cover every constituent. I don't care if it's one person at that meeting or a thousand. You invite me, I'll be there, because I want each and every one of us to know, you know, where our future is and what we plan on doing, and where we plan on going. Having said that, then every citizen, individual or group, has the right to, as we do here at counsel, to express their opinion with regards to what they see, what they like, what they don't like, what they want to see us improved. And I know that you all take that right precious. As the same with regards to voting, all day today, it was half a day at the Capitol, and we had a chance to listen to different folks, you know, coming and speak to us. And the main theme, quite frankly, folks, was the sacrifice, the absolute sacrifice that others have made so that we can vote. Absolute sacrifice that others have made. If you're like me, I'm, you know, I'm upper 50s, almost 60 at this point. I was just a little boy, you know, walking in Macon, Georgia, holding my mom's hands, and I can remember, you know, black water fountains, white water fountains, restrooms, all of this. We have come a tremendous way, but we, the sitting in this room, we're standing on the shoulders of the people prior to us. Let's not embarrass them and let them down, all right? That's all I have. I'm making motion for dismissal? Hold on a second, wait a minute.
I'm good.
It is the sire's birthday. Yeah. Representative, Councilman, king of the census. Happy birthday, brother.
Thank you.
All right, all right, all right. Good deal. Glad you got another one. Glad you got another one. Happy one at a time. All right. We're dismissed. Thank you. All right.